Hi, Ron.
Hi. Hi.
Five, four, three, two, one.
Good evening and welcome to the Select Board Meeting for September 3rd. We'll start with the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I have one announcement. LCTV on September 12th, that's Thursday, from 6:00 to 8:00, they're going to have an open house. So, everyone's welcome. Come and see the facilities. There'll be light refreshments will be served. Again, that's Thursday, September 12th, 6:00 to 8:00 o'clock here at the studio. Thank you. Jay, do you have any announcements?
Just a note that the Board of Health has put some information on the, or is in the process of putting some information on town website relative to encephalitis for informational, for information for the residents.
Thank you. All right, any resident comments? Select Board comments?
Hold on.
Oh, resident comments? Oh, please come up.
Gotta be quick.
So, is it my understanding I'm limited to three minutes?
Yes.
You're gonna make it tough on me.
If you have materials, you can hand it to us also.
I will, believe me. So, um...
Name and address, please.
Excuse me?
We start with you, give your name and address.
I will. Tom Shea, 81 Green Meadow Drive. So, um, what I want to speak about is, my current understanding is the DPW facility is gonna be approximately $4 million over the amount that was originally projected when construction started. Furthermore, it's probable that the Select Board will be requesting the town taxpayers to approve additional expenditures of $1.7 to $2 million in the upcoming months. In addition, the project was supposed to take 15 months and be done by now, but will take at least another 12 months to complete. Basically, what I'm asking is, do you, the Select Board, former town manager, think that the average taxpayer has been appropriately informed of these overages and delays? Especially in light of the large expenditures that have been requested of the taxpayers throughout the year? And let me, because Mary Beth, I told you I would do this. I believe the Building Committee has flagged this issue on numerous occasions and has been full disclosure. I believe the DPW yard is needed. I think the transparency with the taxpayers has been woefully inadequate in terms of disclosure, fiscal responsibility, and just basic telling people what's going on. I don't know if you're timing me, but let me, uh, let me go quickly here. And I'll finish with this. I would love to have more time. I hereby request and actually demand, on behalf of myself and the citizens of Long Meadow, that at the next Select Board meeting, the Select Board, Town Manager, Building Committee, and I had written in here, Town Accountant, sorry, Paul, Finance Director, Colliers, Weston and Sampson, provide a comprehensive public update on the construction of the DPW facility on Dwight Road. I will hand this to you before I'm done. I think it's appalling that, my understanding is, there's 7,000 yards of asbestos material that were on that site, which, you know, it's been a while since I took geometry, but if the average dump truck has 14 yards, there were 500 dump truck loads that have either been Tina Lane, Ohio, or disposed of in place. What I think has happened is, the original $2 million of cost savings, that was money in my pocket, has been used as house money. The thought was that that $2 million would be covered and that everything would be under budget. So, instead of being 21 million approximately, it should've cost 19, because there were cost savings in the contract, and it currently looks like this thing will cost 23. This is in the Building Committee notes. In fact, the Building Committee notes state that, as of June 11th, the contingency had been depleted, the town meeting, maybe that they would have to go to town meeting for additional funds. The Finance Committee, I reviewed all their minutes, there's nothing in there about this. I would've thought the Finance Committee would be involved if there is $4 million over the original projected cost. There's a lot this town could do with $4 million. I don't think the taxpayers have been adequate, adequately informed of this. Do you agree with my numbers, as I said this, in the delay of the project?
There's never a back and forth with comments, so...
That's terrible, but that's okay. So, I'm on record with it. I'm probably close to my three minutes, but let me just give you this, and I said, Paul, I apologize, I got the wrong title here for you. So...
We call it worse.
Yeah, probably, we all have. So, here's copies for Select Board Minutes' numbers. Paul, that's for you. Mary Beth?
And do you have an extra one to give, oh, your name, so Jackie'll leave one for the record.
Jay, that's for you, a little bit of additional information.
Thank you so much.
That's Mark Strange. Oh, here you go.
So, um...
I'll hold on to Richards.
Let me do that. So, let's see what I'm asking for. I guess there's no back and forth, give or take. So, like I said, I would request that Select Board hold a public meeting and review financial status and progress of the DPW project. And if you endeavor to give me a couple more moments. I went over to the site today. There were two workers there. They weren't real workers. These were guys in khakis without calluses on their hands. It looks like Long Meadow is building new athletic fields. There's no concrete poured, there's a couple of pieces of rebar sitting in the ground, and there's a couple of concrete forms. There's no lay-down yard, there's no building material, there's nothing. It looks like construction stopped. There are people doing kitchen renovations in Long Meadow for $50,000 that have more workers on the site. Not good.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Any other resident comments?
Good evening. My name is James Turtelot. I live at 64 Pinewood Road, Long Meadow. I'm here to talk to you tonight about the recent big postcard that Columbia Gas sent out. Columbia Gas has said two different things. In its postcard, it maintains, quote, "Our plans are not about expanding our system. In fact, we are purchasing the same amount of gas." If that were so, there'd be no need for a new industrial distribution facility in Long Meadow. In its original website, that is Columbia Gas's original website, under the heading "Long Meadow Supply Strategy Project," CMA said it was establishing, quote, "A new point of delivery in a non-residential area in Long Meadow to support existing and future growth." Tennessee Gas told the Energy Facility Siting Board, a function of the Department of, uh, the Massachusetts Department of Public Utilities, "The purpose of the project is to increase the capacity and reliability of the natural gas transmission system." And if you refer to, I'm sure this is someplace in your records, if you refer to the Energy Facility Siting Board letter of January 4th of this year, that is clearly stated, and it is a clear quote. In fact, in the Energy Facility Siting Board notice for the March 27th meeting of this year, and that was held here in Long Meadow, the EFSB said, "Tennessee asserts that the Long Meadow Meter Station will support the ability of Columbia Gas to serve future customers." This is repeated in the April 24th, 2019, EFB, uh, Energy Facility Siting Board letter to the Federal Energy Regulatory Commission. And it's further said that if the pipeline is not built, there would not be an ability to meet future demand. And that's on, that's a fairly long letter. It's on pages six and seven. So, it's important to note that utilities like CMA enter into contracts with pipeline developers, and those contracts are the, basically, the financial foundation for pipeline project. If there's no need for gas, there are no contracts and no approvals. So, if the town desires to oppose, and if the, your board, Select Board desires to oppose the gas companies, even if that opposition was only for the purpose of a negotiation to improve our situation, that is one avenue to take. But it's important to note that there'd be no successful opposition or negotiation unless there's a positive legal step forward. I know the board has consulted with specialists, attorneys who have a specialty in gas litigation, and those attorneys certainly can propose the appropriate step, if not before FERC, at least before the DPU, which will let it, let the both gas companies know clearly that there is a determined, strong opposition, which could then put the board in a reasonable position to deal with those companies. But sitting back and asking them to please do something for us is likely to get us $5 and a cup of coffee. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Any other resident comments?
Stephen, I'm Marantz, 117 Wugby Road. Just following up on some of those comments about opposing the pipeline project in the town of Long Meadow. My first comments are to thank, as a resident of Long Meadow, the Planning Board of this community, which has come out publicly in the May town meeting, supporting and bringing forth a bylaw that says, "If we're gonna have this thing in the middle residential area, at least might as well regulate it." So, regulations for odor, emissions, noise, and that's now a bylaw. You know, thank you, Planning Board. Wanted to thank the Board of Selectmen for bringing the town vote. By the way, that was a vote that had, at town meeting, no number, don't know what the numbers were, but there were five dissents. Everything else was positive. Big positive vote for that. Thanking the Select Board for bringing the, "Maybe we should buy this piece of property. Maybe we should spend $2.7 million. Maybe not, but let's, let's ask the people." The people said 68 to 32, "Let's investigate this." Unfortunately, that didn't happen, but a pretty overwhelming statement about what this community wanted. And then, once again, the Planning Board, I understand the Select Board cannot take a position on a public, a citizen petition, but the Planning Board did and supported the petition to say, "We should not have an industrial gas facility in a residential neighborhood." Three dissenting votes at town meeting, 256 to 3. Again, three town votes, three overwhelming statements saying, "We don't want this in this area." As Jim just said, it's, it'd be helpful if you and your legal team can say, "We, as a Board of Selectmen, think this is not a good idea. As a community, the community's leading on this one. We want our leaders to lead on this one." Like the Planning Board, an elected set of folks who said, you know, "If you're gonna have this thing, don't have it in a residential community, in a residential area." Pretty, pretty clear. Regulate it and put it someplace else, if at all. And there's a big question of if at all, given what you just heard about, is there any need for this? Sure, and none of this gas is going to Long Meadow, so it's not, it's not for us. And you've heard previously, you know, Northampton, Holyoke, they said, "No, thank you." So, we're not quite sure who this is going to, but it certainly isn't going to us, and it certainly should not be cited in a residential community. So, my point is, we hope that you, as a board, are allowed by our legal team, that we, the taxpayers, are paying for it, this is our tax dollars that work here, can say, you know, "What, what can you do?" And everything that we've been led to believe is that if the Board of Selectmen of a community comes down and says, "We don't want this," that is significant. You guys are our elected officials. And actually, you've heard from the electorate, the electorate three times, "We don't want this." And if we have to have it, it needs to be regulated, but we don't want it where they want to put it. You've heard that, and it's been pretty loud and pretty clear. So, at some point in time, we hope that the Board of Selectmen can say, "Yeah, we agree with that." And as far as a community statement, as far as not having it cited in the middle of a residential neighborhood, that apparently could be quite significant. Other than that, I think I'm done with my thank yous, but, and thank you for that. This is it.
Any other resident comments? Select Board comments? All right, interim town manager report.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, just a few things. One, the contract with Tanco on the LED lights is signed. They are doing an audit for us in preparation for moving forward on the replacement of the streetlight Cobra heads as LEDs. There was a meeting with Eversource that two of the members of the board attended that they may want to provide an update for. But that contract is signed and we are ready to move forward. I talked with them today. There was air quality testing this past week in the town hall and the adjoining buildings, and so that should be part of a regular process, so we'll be looking at that. I'll update you when I get the results. We did meet with Enfield's residents, representatives relative to old Maple Road, which is an abandoned portion of Maple Road from years ago. And they, it is a road where the only residents who, the residential side served are all in Enfield. It is used as a delivery side or drop-off on the other side for Long Meadow commercial. So, we did reach a very brief and quick agreement, which is that we would grade the road once a year, and that they would be responsible for plowing and trash collection for them. So, very amicable. And then, they did indicate that if the board had other concerns with regards or wanted to raise with Enfield or discuss matters with them, that they would be happy to have a meeting with this board or its representatives to go over that. So, that, we are set to go. We did have a meeting last week with Representatives of the Building Committee relative to going over with Colliers, the question of change orders and how it was being done. We developed an improved communication process, God willing, and understanding of some of the information we have seen relative to change orders and what's being referred to as change orders. What we've determined was, the items that were in the board's minutes looked to be a compendium of several change orders, proposed change orders that they had as compared to just a single document, with the exception of one, which was $1.7 billion. So, I think we are now on a process where we understand that. We also talked with them and instituted improved communication, so information that's being presented to the Municipal Building Committee for change orders is also copied to the manager and vice versa. So, I think we've made some progress there. We've also asked them for some additional information that I'm waiting for, but I think the meeting generally was positive, and I think we did identify some places where there were some gaps that, things were being addressed, but it was unaware of how that was working our way through. We are working, and Paul is moving forward with regards to preparing draft articles for the town meeting in November. We did open the bids for the landfill closure Phase 1, not to be confused with Phase 2 coming down. We're having a meeting on that tomorrow, and we will then have a better understanding of moving forward on that. That is also, DEP, Department of Environmental Protection, has granted a non-traditional work order, but there is an, we need to have a review of endangered species vegetation as a requisite, at least in Phase 1. The amount of the bid, the low, coupled with the cost for the engineering firm, looks to be in excess of the appropriation currently. We do have, believe the resources available to be able to at least initially move forward on Phase 1. The concern with that would be that if we don't move forward on Phase 1, that, a couple things. One is, DEP expects that the closure will commence on Phase 1 this year. Secondly, if in fact we needed to go back to town meeting as a requisite without utilizing current revenues to make sure that we have enough, assuming that we agree on what looks to be potentially the low bid, that we'd have to rebid, because by the time it got to town meeting, it would be more than 60 days, and then we'd have to go back and rebid. None of which would be well-received, probably, from the state. And we can make, we can do the other, assuming that the vegetation issue is addressed, at least in the Phase 1 expeditiously. So, we are meeting tomorrow. We will review the bid submissions. I know you got some information from one of the individual bidders on that we need to look at with regards to its responsiveness to what was bid, but we will be able to move forward on that, I hope, after we've seen the bids and the recommendation from Ty and Bond on that. So, that will be tomorrow, and then we'll see where we are. All right? Thank you.
Any questions for Jay?
So, in terms of this discussion with Enfield?
Yeah.
What's changed? I mean, just, we're gonna grade it? Is that what changed?
Yeah, we, yeah, and the truth is, if there was a public safety concern, the road has, can use it being graded, even though it's entirely in North Attleboro, I'm not north Attleboro. So, this is what? This is, this is not Springfield, so, okay. In Long Meadow, thank you for that. I'm not even sure, anyway. Because it's in, and it's certainly not in North Attleboro, because it's, the road entirely is parallel to the border in Long Meadow, it's serving, it's a dirt road that was abandoned, it looks like, in 1958 when the road was redone, reoriented. So, it does not look, in truth, that the town has been doing very much at all with regards to grading it or anything else. But the truth is, that if there was an emergency or something happened and you needed emergency vehicles to get down that, they would be challenged to do it. So, they indicate, Enfield came, met with Chairman and myself earlier, indicated that they would be willing to snowplow that road because it serves their residence, residential population, and was as long, so, and would continue to do their trash collection on there. So, we met with them, DPW, we were able to do a quick agreement on it. It's a one-year deal, so it is subject to, if it doesn't go well, or there's something else that one side or the other wants to revisit, that's fine, but it will allow us to move forward right away for this year, so...
Okay. And then, you had included the MGM Surrounding Communities Agreement?
Yes, so I can, yes. So, we did meet, the Chiefs and I and Paul did meet with the Legislative Representative of MGM a couple of weeks ago, went over the MGM project. They noted to us that there is still outstanding, or will be outstanding, a traffic study is a requirement of the agreement. The traffic study, as I recall, the MGM agreement is actually paid for by MGM, and toward that end, I've talked to DPW, they've shown me the 2015 baseline report for traffic that was done. There is a requirement that, within 15 months of the commencement of the agreement, which is, I think, another three months, that a second, an updated traffic study be done. So, we're gonna take a look at that. We'll meet internally and then send the information to MGM and see how they want to proceed. But, as I recall the agreement, I believe they actually pay for the, the traffic study itself. Yeah.
And MGM is comfortable with what we've been doing, the kind of progress we've been making?
Yeah, I mean, it was, they indicated no concern with regards to, from us. It was really an update from their standpoint as to where their project is, what their work is, some of their challenges, and just noting that the agreement was with Long Meadow had this requirement, and asking what our plans were relative to it, so we're fine with that.
Great, thank you.
Thank you.
Anything else? Okay. All right, there's no chair report. I took a vacation. Just got back. Let's move down and try to deal with people who are sitting and waiting, library agreement, so we'll go down to new business.
Good evening. Would you like me to do a brief overview of the agreement?
Yeah.
Essentially, Stores Library was represented by attorney Eric Lucchintini, who has experience with the Northampton Library. Together, he and I tried to work out an agreement that we felt we could both recommend to our clients, and that protected their interests. We viewed the interests of the town in the fact that the library is run primarily through public funds, and from the library point of view, the, the, the issue of their continuing contribution and, and direction, ability to set the direction for the library. So, with that said, the, the purpose of this amendment was to clarify certain lines of authority and, and aspects of the, aspects of the relationship between primarily the town, the charitable corporation, which is Richard Saltered Stores, Library, Inc., and, and essentially the library director. The library director was, is, is the key here. So, so the first, the first thing that we addressed was, we went right to the heart of it, and we looked at the selection of the library director. And with respect to the library director, she is a, an employee paid by the town, and therefore, we wanted to preserve the, the fact that the town would ultimately hire the library director, or appoint the library director. There had been some conflict in the past, that there, there was a feeling, there, the, the original operating agreement was formed in 1990. The Home Rule Charter was created in 2004, and therefore, the, the Home Rule Charter cannot negate the agreement based on impairment of contracts under the Constitution. And so, so therefore, with respect to the selection of the library director, we tried to balance everybody's interests... to balance everybody's interests, give everybody inputs, and give you all the best information when candidates are put forth. So the process is essentially that the members of the STORES, the, when I refer to STORES Library, I mean the trustees, I'll call them the trustees, that the trustees would be able to form a committee. The person, the town manager would be one person from the town who would be present at all meetings where the selection of a candidate was taking place, and that the, the trustees can put whomever they choose on that committee. So if they should choose to put members of the town, which would be helpful to them, then they could do so. But there is no restriction on who they have sit on that committee. Then that committee, in cooperation with the Human Resources Department and with the presence of the town manager, selects candidates for library director. Those candidates are then presented to the Board of Selectmen, and the Board of Selectmen have the power of appointment. The Board of Selectmen hear from both the, both the trustees, as well as the town manager. So that, and, and then it is up to the Board of Selectmen to determine whether or not they want to appoint a given individual. The next, the next area was to clarify responsibilities and roles within the town's organizational structure. So with respect to that, there was an acknowledgement that the library director, in a way, serves two masters. In, on the one hand, she serves the trustees. The trustees set the policies and goals for the library, and so, and it is her job to implement those policies and goals through her day-to-day administration of the library. So she is in charge of the, the day-to-day, in charge of the personnel at the library, and the Board of Trustees set her policies and goals. The Board of Trustees does evaluate the library director and provide that evaluation to the Board of Selectmen. So essentially, if there is any type of problem, the primary contact is from the trustees to Board of Selectmen. So in, in, in recognition of the fact that the town manager is running a town consisting of various departments, the, there, the, it is set out that the, that the library director will attend meetings when called upon to do so by the town manager, because the library is part of the town. So, so that is in there. The, there is one, perhaps eye-catching phrase in there, which is that the, the library director will not be a department head within the meaning of the charter. And the reason for that is because, first of all, the charter, the, the operating agreement predates the charter, and therefore, the charter cannot negate that fact. So while that, the, the reason that it matters whether or not she is a department head for within the charter is because the town manager has direct supervisory control and hiring, firing ability over the library director if she were a department head. However, that, that is not the case anyways because of the impairment of contracts issue. Does that make sense?
Does, do we ask questions any time?
Far away.
Does that mean she loses any benefits?
It does not. She is a town employee, and that's clearly stated.
So would not affect that she's not a department head anymore?
No. So the, and in fact, for purposes of the Massachusetts general laws, she is a, she is a department head. She is not a department head within the meaning of the charter. And so essentially, the, that allows for, for, for you to appoint her. Okay? So, so, let's see. So paragraph nine on page eight, which talks about town department meetings, is, is basically there to clarify, and essentially, it states that the Richard Salter Stores Library, Inc. is not a town department, which I think we can all agree is not, and that was very important to them, so it is in the agreement. Also too, that the library director is not a department head within the meaning of the town's charter, so only for the purposes of the town's charter, and that goes to lines of authority. All right? I believe, I believe those were the key points. Are there any other questions?
Marie, I'd just like to, first, I'd like to thank you for all your work, Rose. Rose has been in touch with me throughout this process, and as I think about it, it's kind of like, if anyone's ever had to bring a sailboat, you know, into the, a slip, you know, you kind of have to get everything right. You know, you can't be going too fast, you can't go too slow, you have to tie everything in, and then like, just land in the right place, and, and I think that the two of you and the other attorney have done a great job of putting this together. I was, as we discussed it, I was really wondering how the final wording on, you know, hiring of the library manager was going to work out. And as I read it, I said, boy, they just like slipped it right, slipped it right in a way that everyone should feel pretty good about it. I mean, you know, I think it, it, it gives the trustees, you know, a certain amount of control, but it does give the town its due. And as I look at the way it's written, I'd like to think that if we looked at past hirings of town, of library managers, that they could have passed this limit test, that we would have had the same person put in place, and, you know, so I think that's a good sign of a document. When you can look backwards and say, yes, it worked in the past, and hopefully it'll be helpful in the present and in the future. So, thank you.
Mark?
Rose, I want to, Tom Swears, I think that's a great job here. I, I put the two documents side by side so I can compare them, and there's only one item that I just have a question about how you got to. It's, it's the new document, section 5C1, and I'm just going to read the sentence, and it talks about the personnel policies. It says, "Personnel policies shall be subject to and consistent with personnel policies established by the Personnel Policy Board of the Town." I was wondering, why wouldn't that say that the personnel policies shall be identical to, or shall be, the personnel policies of the town? Just so there is no wiggle room for any deviation between those two policies? And I got to tell you, about 10,000-word document, if that's all I could find, it's free.
Well, I, you know, I haven't run a library before, but there may be issues with respect to, there may be unique policy concerns with respect to the personnel policy concerns with respect to the library. For instance, you have children and adults present in the building. You know, you might have a policy about access to the bathroom. You know, when you have a child in the, in the children's room, I'm just thinking from my kids, you know, at some point, you know, certain age, kids need to be accompanied, that type of thing. So, you know, it just gives a little breathing room to the library for things that they may uniquely need to convey to their employees.
Okay, I was just concerned that it also, on the other hand, gives some room for potential deviation in case of personnel concerns or issues. I wasn't thinking the way you were thinking, obviously, I was thinking more in terms of all, all town employees need to be subject to the same personnel codes, but I accept your, your interpretation.
Can I say, though, the town does not have a personnel policy board anymore?
Okay. So...
It was kind of abandoned with the charter, and those responsibilities were in essence given to the town manager to address personnel policies throughout for employment, so...
You should probably take out the word board. Personnel policies of the town.
The town's personnel policies?
It's fine, there is, there is no actual board at this point in time. If I, I mean, I, I had a brief conversation with Rose before I walked in here earlier, and she set me straight on a couple of my interpretations, but as one of the individuals who's going to be, having to interpret this when it comes to liability insurance, budgeting, policies, personnel policies, I would like to have the opportunity to sit down with Rose and get some of these clarified in my mind, because there's just a lot of things that I, I'm thinking one way, and I think she's interpreting in a different way, so I just want to make sure we're on the same page.
So, Paul, you asking, do we?
Wait, wait, Tom.
One more time?
Right up there.
Okay.
Tom.
So are you saying that we should have, you want a little more time looking this over?
Yes, if, if, if possible, yes.
Okay, thank you.
Actually, I have a concern, and that's why maybe you can talk about it a bit, and that is how this budget and the capital planning is going to flow through all this, because it's become separate. And so I would, I'd like a little extra eyes, and you maybe report back to us the problems you might see in operationally, how this is going to work.
Yeah, if I could, you know, whether you want to sit in or, and or Jean, to, you know, sit in simultaneously, just so we're kind of all on the same page, as people are going to have to deal with on a day-to-day basis.
Any other questions directly for Rose? We'll be bringing it back again at another meeting.
So, thank you. Why are you looking at me? I just have a couple of small questions. A little confused, but I'm working my way through it, so I appreciate it. And thank you for your work on that. The, I just wanted to ask a couple of things just for clarification. We can probably go over that when we do it. So I did have some confusion, where you keep pointing out that the library director is part of the town, but then, and as you pointed out, in number nine on page eight, it's very, it's expressly understood that there is not a department of the town. So...
I'm sorry, on number...
I'm sorry, number nine, page eight.
Correct.
Town department meetings. But it's expressly understood it's not a department, and it looks to me like, when I read the agreement, Rose, that the two sides are separable. So it wasn't clear to me exactly where it was that they were, the library and the employees were town.
Sure, the, the, Richard Salter, just to give you a little background of these things evolve.
Yeah, that'd be great.
So essentially, in Massachusetts, it's not uncommon for libraries to have started out as private charitable entities, and to be, you know, sort of a keystone to their communities. You know, in some communities, libraries formed before the nation formed, so, and this is a similar situation, where an individual wanted to have a library in Long Meadow, and so it was formed privately, and it was initially completely privately funded. And so over time, and this is very common in, in Massachusetts, these private entities have morphed into town, they become part of the town. And so the Massachusetts statutes, chapter 78, completely contemplate this setup where you have a private corporation due to an original bequest, that sort of starts the library out and gets it going. And the, and so in that case, you have the odd situation, and it's just, libraries are odd docs in Massachusetts, and we're kind of lucky that we do have them and that they started out so early. But in any case, the, you have an interaction between a private charitable entity, and they're in the business of the town. They are, they have a substantial role to play within the town's organization. And in the case of the library here, where it is completely, primarily publicly funded at this point, the, the contemplated role under the statutes is that the Board of Trustees serve as, they sort of run, they, they serve as the, you know, like I said, they set the policies and they set the goals for the library director. The library director then implements those. And they have, they have a role in, in sort of advocating on behalf of the library within the town. So their job, their, their person is the library director, and the trustees, they want to help the library director as much as possible to maintain the, the role of the library within the town. Does that, if that makes sense?
Yeah. I'm just trying to make sure I get it.
Yeah.
Number 10, procurement.
Sure.
"In recognition of the town's obligations pursuant to chapter 30B, STORES shall work with the town to ensure compliance." What does that mean?
Um, well, they are...
Do they have their own procurement officer, and do they do their own procuring?
They are not, and this is, this is to prevent sort of, you know, this is a reminder, you are dealing with public funds, and you do have procure, the town has procurement obligations, and you will work with the town, so you just don't go out and buy something with public funds. There is a procurement process.
But the way it's phrased doesn't say it's the town, consistent with what the town procurement, I'm just asking.
Sure.
So is the library, under the agreement, do you, is it envisioned that they shall work with the town to ensure compliance, and that they would do their own procuring, or are they, is the assumption, it doesn't say it's going to follow, or the town will do the procurement for the library consistent with 30B? I'm just trying to understand what that means.
Sure, I mean, I, probably a more direct way to say that would be, STORES Library shall ensure compliance with applicable procurement law.
Yeah, broaden it from just 30B.
Yeah.
Yeah. Would that mean they did it individually or through the town?
Well, they have to procure, using public funds, they have to procure, follow procurement processes under the law.
But they could do it, but hypothetically, they could do it either themselves or through the town, as long as they comply with 30B, they're a public entity, right?
Correct.
Okay, so it's, it's left unclear as to whether they would procure or through the town they would procure.
So, just a suggestion, we might say, shall work within the town's procurement department to ensure compliance with...
Work with the town's procurement department, yeah. I'm just trying to understand whether or not, so it avoids confusion down the road as to whether they are procuring, the library is procuring on its own, or whether they're utilizing the town procurement office to procure...
Well, as the, under the law, they expend, they expend the funds appropriated to the library under the budget, and so therefore, they would initiate the procurement process. So they would say, we want to buy something, and they would, you know, and they would go to the procurement officer. But they are, that is one of their roles, is to procure, and for, on behalf of the library. So...
We can probably talk about that briefly.
Okay.
The last item I just wanted to ask was, to follow up with what was asked before, I think Mark raised it on the personnel. Does that assume that the Board of Library Trustees would be creating their own personnel policies?
Well, as, as I had mentioned before, you know, I think that they, they have to be consistent with, right? So they cannot create a personnel policy that is in conflict with the town's policies. However, you know, they may want to enunciate to their, their personnel, should a child approach you and, and look for the key to the bathroom, you have to make sure what age they are, and you shall make sure that they are accompanied by an adult, something like that. That's, you know, that may be, I don't know if that's a good example of a personnel policy, but there may be things that...
Well, I'll give you one. For example, if you take a look at the town personnel policy for personal leave, it requires the approval of the town manager. So I'm assuming that if the Board of Library Trustees were drafting their own personnel plan, that they would be addressing that, whether they wanted to keep it that way, or whether they wanted to have it subject to the Board of Library Trustees vote, or the chairman of the personnel, or something. So there are places throughout the policy where either they would have something separate, or, but if you followed the town policy, then it would be incumbent on whoever the town manager is to deal with those items. So I'm just pointing that out as something you might...
Well, my sense would be that the library director would have the authority to approve the, as the department heads?
It's not the way the personnel plan is right now, so I'm just throwing that out.
Okay.
We can, we can go over it, I'm just, it's fine.
Okay.
Mark?
Rose, I, the issue that... The issue that brought, brought all this, all this up really, or one of the issues that brought all this stuff up, it is the, the, the issue of the, the library payments that, you know, every year we, we get a letter or get an exemption from this, the state issue, the state allowance or the state requirements of funding libraries, and I'm not sure exactly what that was and we're woefully behind whatever level is we're supposed to fund it at. But, the way this is written is, it's not a town department. Does that mean we're now exempt from that state requirement to provide funding for stores, library to meet that, whatever that standard is?
While stores, library, whilst, Richard Salter Stores Library, Inc., a corporation, is not a department and is not subject to the control of the town, that entity, the, the library department, there is a library department within the town, and that is headed by the library director who is a, is a department head for all but the definition in the charter. Okay, so the definition in the charter goes to the town manager hiring and firing the, and that is really the only thing that I could find in the charter.
But the town's responsible for the budget of the library?
Yes.
And yet, the town's not responsible for the budget of the, I mean, that's what...
No, the town, the, the, the library is still a department under Mass. General Laws. So, and the, the library, the library director is still a department head under Mass. General Laws.
Okay, I, I guess my, my concern is, I can envision down the road where we get disagreement between people where we say, here's the budget the library's submitting and it's just something the town can't, can't support, and yet, we've got this, well, you, you know, you're obligated to support the, the library at a certain, certain level, and I, I just was thinking that this would help clarify that whole funding issue, but it, it's, it's more or less left it in the same limbo it was in when we started.
Well, the budget, if, if you read the, the sections discussing the budget, essentially, you know, my understanding of the process is, is at the beginning of the fiscal year, each department starts to, starts the process right away to form their budget and to prepare for the next spring's annual town meeting. And so, the role of the, the role of the trustees in that situation is to assist the, the library director and to develop a budget. They, they develop the budget together and then they submit it to the town. The town meeting's going to vote whether or not, they, you know, they vote up or down on the budget. And so, the, all the language is geared towards the trustees and the library director, they put together the budget and then they enter into the stream of the pro, of the preparation process with all the other departments. And so, so that's, that's to do with paragraph nine, you know, she's, she's got to participate as a town department head in these, these budget meetings.
I just, again, when I was reading them side by side, the old one said, literally, the, the library trustees prepared a budget and presented it for the town meeting to vote up or down on, or essentially those words.
Yeah.
The new one says that, and it's actually section five, C. Four, that works with the, with library, developing and advocating for library budget facilitates the town's budgetary planning and operations process. But it still says, the stores, library shall keep the town fully and, and timely apprised of the library facility's budgetary needs.
Mm-hmm.
It's understood the town's subject to, inconsistent with applicable laws, responsible for determining procedures it uses in when appropriating funds. So, you know, it's, brings it a little bit back more into the, what I'll call the, what we've actually been doing budget process as opposed to...
Yeah.
All right, I'm okay with it.
So, Paul, if you could just make sure we're not all of a sudden obligated financially to do more than we did before, and they could go back to, because like, the, I know it talks a lot about liability here, and I guess MCAD claims now will go to the trustees, it won't go to us, because it's their employees.
Well, that's what I'm trying to understand from a personnel, so hypothetically, if the, if the, if there was a personnel matter and there was some form of litigation, an MCAD claim, an employment claim, et cetera, on, based on what would, and the town, the library was party to that.
Mm-hmm.
Hypothetically, the town could also be a party to that. But, is the assumption here that if the, if the library trustees can create their own personnel plan, that the town is therefore, there's no specific role for the town relative to MCAD claims or, or with regards to employment law claims or any of those issues? Because that's not something that we would have, the town would have any control over. It's not our town's personnel plan, it's an MC, it's a decision made by others, so, which is fine, so...
Or our liability might not cover.
From the liability, yeah.
We might not cover you anymore, since the way this is set up is you're a separate entity of your employees, so if there is an MCDA, maybe Maya will say, well, we can't cover it.
But employees are employees of the town.
Correct.
Employees of the town.
So, that's why I thought that the personnel policies ought to be the town's personnel policies and, and to my mind, Rose, if, if we look at the, those exceptions, they ought to be made known to, I guess, Erica or our personnel department and we'll build them into our town's personnel policies.
Right.
Because everything you, you've envisioned here, I can imagine happening at Parks and Rec, for example, you know, with kids and other, other things. So, you know, if the, if the library needs specific things, let's build them into the town's personnel policies and just make them subject to, then, then the issue of who's responsible for employee things should go away.
Yeah, you could do an asterisk to the policy or something like that.
Except applies only to...
We should take a look at that, just because there's various places there where there's a reference to, to other people's roles, and so that may not be the intent of all the, of the parties, so...
Okay.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. So, we'll bring this next week if, uh, next meeting, not next week, and then, if anyone has any further questions in regards to it, why don't we send that to Paul?
Yeah, that's fine.
Because you'll be having the meeting.
You're only thinking to meet in two weeks.
I will be.
Mr. Moynihan has gone basically the next two weeks.
So, we should do it beginning of October?
It would be preferable to do it in the first...
Is that going to be okay? Or is the library expecting to hear back from us, or can we wait till beginning of October?
Well, we, we sort of left that open, so...
Have they, have the trustees of library seen this and...
The trustees, you all received it at the same time and the trustees had their meeting tonight at six o'clock.
So, they're probably making the same kind of...
The same thing, yeah.
Tralucanini may have his own list.
Did you think at all about transitional language?
Transitional.
Like saying the agreement would take place in sixty days, which are forty days or thirty days, which would allow hypothetically, anything from the board of library trustees if they wanted to propose some modifications or plan some modifications on personnel, making a reference to the incumbent employees, that there's no change in their status, or, I don't know if you've thought of that, but I was going to suggest based on, if it's signed, then suddenly, the personnel policies of the town and the board of library trustees may not have personnel policies in place on day one. So, I was thinking maybe a brief period of, the agreement will take effect thirty days, hence from the time it's signed, in order to allow a smooth transition and clarify anything that was still outstanding.
Okay. Yeah, or we might want to resolve the personnel issue, personnel policy issues prior to reaching the agreement and during the next month.
Not to throw it through, I just make it a smooth transition, that's all.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's fine.
But this is a, this, this has been in process for how many months now?
Long time.
Six months?
Six months.
Nine years.
And so, you know, I know that, it would be nice to put this to bed. I've talked to people who've said, you know, that they can't believe it's taken, you know, they know it's going to take some time, but, you know, it'd be good if we could take a vote on this, you know, maybe next meeting, but they're saying it's just not going to be woven in the agenda?
Well, no, Jay is not going to be around until two meetings from now, so it'd be the first in October, and he wants to have a meeting with Paul and the attorney to go over and maybe with the department head, Jean or something, to go over details before.
For the purposes of making a transition, a smooth transition, not to throw it, just to make sure it's understood, right?
I think we're ninety-nine percent of the way there, Tom, just working on some of these last minutes. I mean, this is far better than I thought it would possibly come out with.
A lot of work.
That's good to hear, Mark.
Thank you.
I'm glad you said that. Rose, you can leave feeling like you've done a good job.
With more to do. So, all right, so...
So, the first meeting in October is, what would that be, Paul?
Is that the seventh?
Do you know?
Uh, I think it's like the seventh. I think that date sounds familiar.
Sounds right.
The first meeting in October.
Okay.
Okay.
We'll let you know for sure. Yeah, because that's, on the budget, actually, that's, we'll be talking about that later. We'll say the seventh for now, because the budget thing has something weird on it.
Right, so if that's Columbus Day, it'll be the first Tuesday.
Yes.
If it's celebrated on the first Monday.
All right, thank you very much.
Okay, thank you.
I got the seventh in October.
Yeah, I don't think, and so we'll just go to that immediately, which is the budget, amended budget. It said Tuesday, the eighth is our next meeting, but that is Yanakpor, or is that?
Well, I guess the question is, you're referring to the budget document?
Yeah.
I thought I had revised the dates, but is the seventh Columbus Day?
I don't think so.
I don't have it down.
It's the following week? Okay, so it would just be, it'd be the seventh then.
So, it would be the seventh, okay.
Right, I, I, I had made the assumption that Columbus Day was celebrated on the seventh.
Okay, so, select board meeting will be on the...
October seventh.
October seventh, okay.
And then the next is the twenty-first.
Holiday's not, my holiday's not till the eighth, so...
The eighth, that's why I was worried that you had put it on the eighth. Okay, so we're, we're better.
Right, okay.
Okay, so we checked that out. So, going down to...
I'll do the tree.
The tree? Do you mind, Mary Beth?
Dave Marinelli, nine of Rua Lane, chairman of the tree committee, and I'm here as the tree warden. As you know, a tree warden is allowed to remove hazardous trees, but has hearings for trees that are not hazardous. And I may have various reasons for wanting to have a tree removed that's not hazardous. If it's in decline and will become hazardous and it felt that it's not worth saving, we might have a hearing, get citizen input, and I've had quite a few hearings since October when I started, and I've had very few objections. The first two objections that came in, I was able to work with the homeowners and do some pruning instead of removal. But recently, I identified two large ash trees on Winona Place. They came to my attention because the neighbor across the street was concerned about them falling on her house, and one of the trees had actually dropped a branch on a house, not her house, but the one adjoining the tree, a couple of years ago, and there's a claim in process for that one. So, anyway, they're two thirty-five inch ash trees, thirty-five inch diameter at breast height, so it's a big tree. And it's planted in a very small tree belt, it's maybe only four to six feet wide, the grass strip, and the trees are really lifting the sidewalk, and they're ash trees, and that's significant too, because all of the ash trees in Long Meadow will be dead within five years unless we treat them for the Emerald Ash Bore. We've started that process this year, we treated thirty-eight trees, and we've identified other trees that we will treat next year. It would cost about five hundred dollars per tree to treat those two ash trees. So, in my opinion, although the trees aren't terrible looking right now, they have some crown dieback, they're the wrong tree for that location and it's not worth spending the money to, to save them. So, I had a hearing prior to the, in fact, before the hearing, I was concerned about whether or not there would be objection, because these trees do provide a lot of shade and, and people do love their big trees. We discussed it at a tree committee meeting and I showed pictures of the six-inch sidewalk displacement that they're doing and the narrow tree belt, and we talked about whether it was worth investing in saving these trees. And there was a unanimous decision from the tree committee that these trees should be replaced with a more appropriate tree. So, nobody came to the hearing, but prior to the hearing, I had two written objections, and I think those were distributed to you. And according to Mass. General Law, a tree warden is not allowed to remove a public shade tree if there's a written objection at or before the hearing unless such cutting is approved by the selectman or mayor. So, that's why I'm here, is to get approval to remove these two trees.
Mark?
Yeah, I, I actually brought up a picture of them, they're the only two trees left on the tree belt on that street and the...
Well, Winona Place only has four houses on it.
Right, and, and, well, but the other side doesn't have any trees, the street, the side has no other trees, and the tree diameter is entirely, the entire tree belt diameter. If, nobody else has any questions, I'm going to make a motion that we accept the recommendation of the, of the tree warden to remove those trees.
Okay.
Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Um, discussion?
Discussion, yeah, I just heard, so, in a case like that...
And I can project pictures onto the screen if this is an Apple screen, because I have pictures of the tree on my phone.
I have no idea if it's an Apple.
I would have to assume it can, because to me, they deal more than like...
I've got it too, so...
Okay.
I mean, I can show them on my phone or I could project them.
If anybody wants to see it.
Yeah, so, I guess the question is, in kits, in situations where those trees would be viable to, to keep and it would be safe for the neighboring houses and so forth...
Yeah.
Do we ever make adjustments to the sidewalk to have it go around?
Oh, yes, yes, absolutely. In fact, we just started sidewalk renovation today on Ellington, and the DPW engineer consulted with me and we made some decisions about ramping the sidewalk over the roots instead of cutting the roots, and you definitely want to take action to save veteran shade trees.
Okay, yeah.
And, and that's always been an emphasis, but it's not, you know, when I looked at those trees six months ago on the Ellington project, I found two trees that had significant decay or others, other issues, split and, you know, limited life expectancy. So, I had hearings and had those two trees removed. But all the other trees that are healthy, we're trying to find ways to work around it, either getting an easement from the homeowner to divert the sidewalk onto their property, diverting the sidewalk slightly towards the street, or ramping it. You need to be careful about ADA compliance, because you can't have too much of a ramp, and there's also an issue with drainage, where you want to make sure that the water runs off the sidewalk in the winter, so there's not ice. But yes, all, all of that makes sense if it's a, if it's a healthy tree that's contributing. If it's a bad species or has declined, then I think it's better to remove the tree and plant something better.
These trees also both look like they're leaning against the wires that, according to this picture, so...
That's right, there, yeah, there are communication wires there too, and we would never plant a shade tree in that location again. It would have to be a small flowering tree, something that wouldn't go, go above the trees, because part of the reason we lose power in town is we have many, many inappropriately planted trees. You should not be planting large trees under power lines, and that's a continuing struggle. It's going to take us a long time to get rid of all those big shade trees that were planted in the wrong locations.
Well, I am a big supporter of trees, but I also respect the work that your committee does, and so I'll support this.
Any other questions? Do you have money for this?
Money for the removal?
Yeah.
Yeah, I think so. We haven't run out yet. I mean, we spent probably eighty percent of our budget in the first six of the, weeks of the year because of the storm and all that, but we're going to try to stretch it out.
And the other question is, will the streets, since you say there's no other trees really out there, would they be a priority to get replacement trees?
Um, yes, I love to plant trees where trees have been removed. It takes a little bit of time to grind the stump and have the site be, but the, the critical thing really is to have agreement from the homeowner that they'll water it, because you can get a couple Boy Scouts to plant a tree, but really, you need two years of watering twice a week, and not everybody signs up for that. So, if, if I, Dave Marinelli, you know, ask for the town to plant a tree on my neighbor's property and he doesn't want to water, you know, the tree warden's not going to do that. I, I really can't spare workers to go water trees on the tree belt all over town. We planted a hundred fifty trees, we were lucky that we had an intern this summer that could water the forty trees on the green, but we really are dependent on homeowners to water for us. And so, if a homeowner says, I would like a tree replaced, they go to the head of the list, and I have a hundred fifty requests for trees to be planted that have come in since November first. So, people are asking for trees and, and we do plant them, but we don't impose them on people, and I don't know if this homeowner wants trees replaced there, and they may or may not want, you know, small flowering trees, which is the only thing I would plant there because of the communication wires.
But you would let them know that they had the right to ask for them.
Absolutely, yeah.
Any other questions for, all right, all those in favor of the motion? All right, thank you very much, and thanks for the work you're doing.
Thank you.
Mary Beth, do you want to come up and talk to us?
Mary Beth, do you want to come up and talk to us about the DPW change order?
Sure.
Thank you.
Okay, Mary Beth Bergeron, four nine seven Inverness Lane. Last week, the building committee met. We were presented with three change orders of those. We approved the first two because they fell under the guidelines for approval by, directly by the building committee. We do have a third request, and it's PCO number forty-eight. And that directly relates to additional ACM material found on site. Specifically, the location is at the south embankment, southwestern embankment, where we're going to be having a retaining wall. When the equipment started removing some of the material, they discovered additional asbestos material. And the DEP is requiring that it be resolved. The best, what we came up with, or what the contractor came up with, was the best way to deal with that was to bury it on site. And that is the proposal you have in front of you. It's a total of forty-five thousand, seven hundred and fifty dollars and thirty-one cents. That material will be buried. The, the hole has to be dug, material buried. It'll be covered with orange material, so that anyone who digs down in that area will be alerted immediately that there's asbestos material. You'll remember that, or hopefully you know that there will be an AUL placed on the house, on the building, the lot rather, which is an activity use limitation, because there's other asbestos material on site. So it falls, it is the least expensive way to address the, the issue. In addition to that, they suggested paving over that area. We are not recommending that to you, and that was approximately fifty-six thousand dollars to pave over that same area where they bury it. We felt that the DPW could probably have it done less expensively at some point in the future. And so we are not recommending you approve that.
I would just say, dealing with the asbestos issue in the manner that's being proposed here is consistent with what DEP is allowing.
Any questions for Mary Beth? Is this it? I mean, do they think that, that this will be the last piece of asbestos mitigation?
I can't answer that question. I would say that there have been a number of times in the process over the last twelve months that we thought this would be the last of it. Do I believe that it is? Yes, I do. But I thought that before. And they keep uncovering additional asbestos material.
Any other questions or a motion on the floor to accept it?
I just have a quick question. The, the only alternative here was to bury it on site. There was no remove it, move it out of town. I mean, I, I assume those are all clearly more expensive to do.
Oh, clearly more expensive, yes.
But, but it would also not put the same kind of site restrictions on that site.
Those, those site restrictions will be on there anyway, on, on the property.
But some future generation who may want to build something on this location is gonna come across this and have to abate it at that time.
That is correct, right. But there are other areas on the site that they would discover additional ACM. Which is why even before this was discovered, there was going to be an AUL on the deed.
And this is a small section on?
It would be the northwestern corner, over near where the Fuel Island is, is going to be constructed.
Any other questions? Is there a motion on the floor to accept this change order?
I'll make a motion to accept the change order for forty-five thousand, seven hundred and fifty dollars to handle this asbestos-containing material on site.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor? Thank you very much.
Just a clarification, the word you used was accept. Does that mean you approved the change order?
Approved the change order, yes.
Thank you. There's a difference.
Okay, we're going to move back up to approval of the minutes of August nineteenth, the regular meeting. Is there a motion to approve?
Sure, we approve the minutes of the August nineteenth, two thousand and nineteen, select board minute meeting.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor? Let's go through the easy stuff. The block party approval for Pleasantview Avenue. Is there a motion to approve the block party under new business?
Motion to approve.
Yeah.
Is there a rain date?
I just want to make, yeah, it's a motion to approve the block party of September twenty-first with a rain date of September twenty-second for Pleasantview Avenue.
Is there a second to Mark Strange's motion?
I'll second it.
Okay, any discussion? All those in favor? Okay, is there a motion to approve the one-day liquor license for Saint Mary's Knights of Columbus Polish Night?
Yeah, I'll make a motion to approve the one-day liquor license for Polish Night. The event is on nine twenty-nine nineteen at the church.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion?
Yeah, I do. I guess the question that keeps coming up is the number of one-day liquor licenses that any organization can have in, in a given period of time. And I'm not trying to be a stickler on it, but it's an ABCC requirement. It's not our, our town requirement. And I guess the, the big question is, you know, because I've been counting. Saint Mary's is pretty darn close, if not over. The question is, are these all separate organizations within, I mean, you'll notice that the, the first one, you know, the applicant's name has been crossed out, and it keeps getting changed. I just want to be cautious that we not exceed the number of one-day liquor licenses we're authorized to extend to a single organization.
Well, we should recommend in Saint Mary's, say it's Knights of Columbus or the Guild meeting, rather than start with Saint Mary's.
Right, I mean, I, you know.
So are you saying they've reached their limit, or how many is required by?
I don't know, I can, I have to check.
Yeah.
I mean, this, this, I, I suspect this isn't it, but it's, you know, it gets frequent, especially between now and the end of the year.
All right, we'll, we'll keep an eye on that.
If they are close, maybe we can send a letter to them.
Absolutely.
To notify them.
Yeah.
Not a problem.
And it goes by the location, not the applicants, right?
No, it goes by the organization.
You see.
Because the community house has all sorts of, if we went by location.
I'll check. We'll check there.
All right, all those in favor? Is there a motion to approve the one-day liquor license for the Guild meeting at Saint Mary's?
Yes, I'd like to make a motion to approve the one-day liquor license for Saint Mary's Guild on September eighteenth.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion on the Guild meeting? No, all those in favor? Okay. All right, so let's go back to, let's see, some, this is easy. Appoint the Pioneer Valley Planning Commission alternate. Everyone said go back, talk to Walter. I went back and talked to Walter, and Walter said, I offered to do it. He said he would, I'm down there half the time anyways. So until there's a new town manager, I'm asking to be appointed as the Pioneer Valley Planning Commission's alternate.
You are?
I'm gonna do it.
Go for it, Marie. I move, I move. To appoint Marie Angelides as the alternate Pioneer Valley Planning Commission delegate until such time as a new town manager is in place.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, discussion. All those in favor? Okay. Now, I wanted to bring up charter changes. And we started working on this last year under Mark, and we got a lot done in the Springtown meeting. And let's see.
Those were the easy ones.
We did the easy ones. And so I wanted to pick out something that we would start working on next. And I don't want to do the, what do you call it? I don't want to do capital planning, because that's Richard Foster's thing, and he's not gonna be around for the next couple of meetings. So I thought an easy one for us to work on next would be the building committee, unless someone else saw something in there that would not be so difficult to pick up for the Fall Town meeting. Did anyone else have an opinion on it?
I actually have that, that aspects of it, but the, the document that you circulated in our packet was a document that I had put together.
Oh, so this was from you, not them?
Right, that was mine.
Oh, okay.
Of what they did and kind of summarizing it one by one. So, you know, the, you have to go down to section three, which says that the town building committee, and that's, you know, I mean, obviously, you know, that's how I interpreted what they, what they wrote, but.
Well, I'm uncomfortable doing town manager responsibilities.
Yeah.
We're in the middle of getting new town manager.
Maybe now's the time to do it, huh?
Well, if there's an opportunity, that's it, yeah.
Well, it gets messy, because it's also about appointment. And so I was just thinking an easy one, unless anyone else has a feeling, would be to do the building committee. Maybe look at the finance recommendations.
I mean, if, if you look at it, the building, the, the charter review committee proposed that they add a section that defines the, the building committee and what they do as part of a, if you will, a chartered committee in town. And that's all it says, and, you know.
Well, I think we have to look at the, what the duties and functions are of the building committee, make sure no one has problems with this before we put it on, because that's their recommendations, but we're, make the final decision on it. So I wasn't gonna ask for discussion today, but just if everyone's agreeable, we'll try to pull together the town building committee section for a Fall Town meeting. When do we have to have that done by?
Oh, it, there, I do have a list of potential warrant articles that we'll discuss later. If you're gonna vote for it, we'll put it on the list, and we'll try to get it done for the, on the draft when we have that in a couple of weeks.
Okay. Does anyone else have a preference?
What was in the document you sent out, obviously, is my take on what they said and how I thought it should be interpreted. The questions were, we have to agree whether we think a town building committee should be a standing committee specified in the charter. I mean, if we agree it should be, then let's add what they suggested we add. If we don't, we don't add it. I, I think it comes, that, that, that's the, that's the decision on this thing, as far as I'm concerned. I mean, that's the way I read it, right?
Yeah, does anyone have trouble with the building committee being part of the charter?
No.
Under the recommendation?
No.
Okay, so why don't we move right into your discussion of potential warrant articles then?
Yeah, let me just pass this around and. I mean, this is my own list, and again, I may be missing one or two, but actually, Jay had put together a list a couple of weeks ago, and some of those are from his list. So I'm not exactly sure if they're gonna move forward or not, like the speed limit. But we can take them one by one. You know, obviously, we want to reimburse the, the forestry account for all the costs incurred by the micro, microburst. And at this point in time, we've accounted for a hundred and thirty-seven thousand dollars that that microburst has cost us. So certainly, we would minimally put that amount back into the forestry budget. Probably be taking it out of free cash. The second one is the additional money for the landfill closure. As Jay alluded to earlier, we had an eight-hundred thousand dollar appropriation. We opened up the bids, the little bidder, plus the cost of the engineering. Right now, exceed that eight-hundred thousand dollars. So we're going to need some supplemental money, plus some, probably some contingent money to be applied to in order to carry out that phase one of the closure.
And just to point out, one of the issues on the closure would be that the work, the expectation would be that the work would be done now. But, you know, you have, for example, seeding, it includes, this is phase one of the work for the closure. That includes potentially seeding the area that's going to be capped. So by the time you get to it, you could be into November or so, which means either the seed doesn't take, or they come back again. So I'm just thinking that there should be some recognition that some of this, some of these costs may be incurred later in the spring of next year, so.
Is there some seeding that happens where they put it on just before snowfall, and then it stays safe there?
The plan includes, as I recall, seeding. But, you know, what will happen, I think, is DEP will say, okay, go ahead and seed it, if you say so. But, you know, if it doesn't take, or in any event, we want you to go back out in the spring and see whether or not it did take, or if it didn't take, then you'll need to do a new hydroseeding or reseeding. So, or they'll say stabilize it with the plastic now, and then come back again later on and seed in the spring, so. The bid assumes that the work is all gonna be done in one fell swoop.
Right.
There was a comment earlier today by one of the, one of the citizens commented, Mr. Shea made a comment about the landfill. I, I just wanted to make sure that when we write the warrant article, we make it very clear that this was a pay me now or pay me later. And the only thing the DPW project did is accelerate the timing, that which, that this isn't a DPW project issue. This is a, we never closed our nineteen-seventy landfill issue, and, and as they say, the chickens have come home to roost.
Yes, I think that's the way I understand it. They had an administrative consent order. They were not enforcing it, requiring it. The town found the issue with regards to the DPW, was looking for a way of disposing of it, taking it out to a landfill in Ohio was cost prohibitive. DEP was willing to let it go here, but as a requisite for it, as you say, was move forward now on, on phase one of the, toward the closure, yes.
So are you saying on that, that we don't need that full amount now, because we're gonna be seeding in the spring, or just that?
No, I'm just saying, I think it would be prudent perhaps to keep some contingency available, so that if something happens as we move our way forward.
So that's why you're asking for twenty-five?
Yes, yes.
All right, and where's that, where are these two things coming from?
Actually, all, all, all the numeric representations will be coming out of free cash.
Okay, all right, go ahead.
Right, we'll have that approved mid to latter part of, of September. I'm anticipating about a million dollars also, just FYI, in free cash. Additional bond authorization on the DPW, I think, you know, people are aware of, of the situation with the DPW. We just signed a couple more contract, change orders. We will be seeking additional funds there.
How much?
I'm not sure at this point in time.
Okay, under two million, or?
I believe it would be under two million.
And are, and that, do we, we can do that at a vote in town meeting? We don't have to go back?
Well, there, it's, it's, it's gonna be potentially a two-part process. We can, we have some unissued money that we can issue without going back to town meeting. But even when we do that, I think there's still gonna be a shortfall, that we need to appropriate or have an authorization for a bond for some additional funds above and beyond that other number.
Since you opened up the Pandora's Box here, I guess I have a question or a concern about this, because there are some items that are being currently paid for by the DPW project that potentially weren't really the DPW project's cause. And the number one item is the, the drainage dingle along the, I don't know what that is. That's the north side, I think, of the, of the DPW site, which, you know, you can lay a lot of things to it, but there's a lot more water flowing down the dingle that caused a lot of that collapse. And I'm concerned that we're charging the DPW project for something that may be a stormwater-related cost. And I don't know, you know, you know, I, I get it. We asked five people, you're gonna get three or four different answers, if not five answers. But from my perspective, and, you know, I spend a lot of time walking the route along there, you know, there's a large contribution from the, what was done on Dwight Road, the diff project with the new drainage that was put in there. We had some massive washout rains in the spring that this happened, you know, coincident with. And I'm just wondering why we're charging the DPW project, although it's convenient, and clearly they saw it, and clearly it impacts the project when the, when the dingles started collapsing. But was the cause of it really the DPW project, and why is the DPW project paying for it?
Well, I don't think we are, that we're holding off on that project.
No, I think they, they already paid. There's seventy-five thousand dollars, we already paid.
You've got some money in there, they've done it, yes. But there's also, yeah, I don't know enough of the history, but we can look at that, yeah.
I mean, I, you know, it, it makes sense for some of this money to be transferred over to a storm sewer, stormwater project.
Should we ask Mary Beth to come back in?
If she's out there, maybe we can, I don't know.
Oh, could you do it, thanks.
But, you know, the, the other thing is, you know, I just want to make sure that whatever was done at the land- that whatever was done at the landfill, you know, the trucking part of it, clearly, that's the DPW project that uncovering it clearly is, but that we're clearly separating out what's the DPW's cost versus what's not the DPW's cost.
I know you were discussing it at the construction meetings I've attended. The, he's wondering how much of the collapse of the drainage
Oh, yes.
has gone towards the DPW cost, and he...
Are you talking about the collapse of the, are you talking about the rear, the old overflow retention base?
No, no, I'm talking about the dingle that was, we had to go in there and...
Top of my head, I think it was around 50 grand.
Right, the point is, you know, how much of that was exacerbated, if not caused, by the washout rains that we had going down, you know? In other words, why is the DPW project paying? It needed to be fixed, I get it. I'm not questioning whether it needed to be fixed. The question is, should it have been fixed under our stormwater project, because it was the dingle that was collapsing?
Clearly, clearly, when ownership of the property was taken, there was an order of condition issued by the Conservation Commission that they wanted that cleaned up, because there was a lot of tree fall already. Fast forward, heavy rains, uncontrolled amount of stormwater going down there, caused slippage of the embankments on both north and south sides, further tree fall into the, into the stream, necessitated almost an emergency situation where we had to clean it up, because if we didn't, because of the water being diverted from the new tree falling in there, it was further eroding in the embankment. Now, the situation at that particular, particular area is not unique in town. There are many other areas in town that are suffering the same thing. This one was particularly bad.
Right, my only point is that...
Should there have been a sharing of that expense?
Sharing, I think, should our stormwater utility program that takes care of dingles and dingle washouts have paid for that, rather, in other words, you know, and while you were outside, my comment is, you ask five people, you're going to get at least three answers, different answers, but, but I think it behooves us to look at that, because...
Yeah, my personal opinion is a valid argument could be made that it really didn't belong to the DPW project, except for the order of condition, so therefore becomes part of it.
Fine, and it needed to be done, and that's where their money was at the time it needed to be done, I get that.
We can look at that.
Yeah, that's all.
And it was advantageous to take care of it then, before, before we started putting the building up and had heavy equipment going over there, et cetera, so...
It's just really a question of the funding source.
Yes.
And whether it should have been, is it related specifically to the DPW construction, or is it something that we would have had to address separately?
Yeah, and I think Mary Beth, both sides of the embankment, and it was up and down, and it was before we even moved into the site, there was, there was an issue.
There was an issue before.
The Stormwater Enterprise Fund is 75% funded by the general fund.
Right, right, but...
I understand your point about, but the bond issue.
As opposed to the project, it's a...
Right. And, but if we didn't get it done, we would have had to have a town meeting to...
Not arguing that, Paul, at all, Paul, I was...
Cost us money to have a town meeting. Kate, do you want to, did you have any, since Mary Beth, any other questions in regards to the...
We should come back with you with a, some information on that before you, before you make a vote with regards to whether you would want to deal with that or how you would want it, you know?
I'd love to hear that.
You'd like to hear that, okay. All right, thank you for coming back in.
That's it, thanks.
I'm but a cell phone call away.
MVP grants, my understanding, there is a large grant that we're pursuing to the tune of about a half a million dollars, or we'd have about a 25% matching share, correct me if I'm wrong, if you're aware of that? Yeah, so I've actually put in 130 instead of 125, just to kind of have a little leeway there. Legal expenses for the Tennessee Gas Pipeline and Columbia Gas, I don't know, I mean, we haven't incurred that much to date, whether we want to appropriate money now or wait till the spring for that defense.
Well, I think we appropriate it now.
Okay.
But I think you might have a better idea in a couple of weeks, but certainly by the time you go to put the article and prove the article.
Anyway, I put a placeholder in there for $50,000 for that particular one. It could be higher, it could be lower, I'm not sure. Annually, at the fall special town meeting, the Community Preservation Act requires that we allocate 10% of the revenues to the three distinct fund balances, historic, you know, the recreation one and, I can't think of the housing. So, that, you know, that's a standard one that we do, we'll be doing that. To some degree, we talked about the repeal of Massachusetts General法, Chapter 51, Section 16A, which is where we've approved election commissioners in replace of the Board of Registars.
That's what that was in the...
Yes, that's what I sent you. There was a major freakout. They did not like it.
So, they had, the issue on that, if I may, is that, there is a freakout on that. So, what the, as I, as I understand it, what the thought was, is that they believed the Board of Registars were looking for is a fourth member, and what was proposed to them is the establishment of the Election Commission, which has four members. The Board of Registars currently is one Democrat, one Republican, and the town clerk. The legislation that was approved by town meeting, creating the Election Commission, is two Democrats, two Republicans as majority party, and no role for the town clerk at all, which, the town clerk is the one who does the brunt of, of the information. It then creates concerns from, with regards to the new board of, the election commissioners who are not paid a huge amount for stipend, of the amount of work that's now going to be required of them, even as we work something through with the town clerk relative to providing more staff support, but ultimately, it would still be then the Election Commission who would now be voting these four members. What they really seem to want is go back to the way it was, which was the election, which is the Board of Registars, one and one with the clerk being the third member.
It was, it was three, so they had to have two, no, they had to have two Republicans, and then one Democrat, and then we kept switching it, which was then two Democrats and one Republican, but then the people that had been doing all the work.
Misunderstanding, because the clerk told me today that she was, had been appointed one of the registrars.
Well, they made her, they appointed her a informal registrar, she could do all the work. But I, when we go back to the old system, we're going to be stuck with three, and that's why we did it.
So, it's one of, a couple, if you leave it the way it is, there's a good deal of concern from the existing members as to what that means, and certainly with... The difficulty is, however, because the town accepted it as a state law, town council believes pursuant to, which we looked at, I looked at Mass General法, Chapter 4, Section 4B, says that, indicates that once a town has accepted a state act, that it stays in place for a minimum of three years.
Oh.
Yeah, so, there is one way potentially to do this, which I've taken the liberty of exploring, which is a little off the wall, but...
We welcome that here.
Okay, so hypothetically speaking, it would be possible, and I did talk to legislative office on this as well as town council. The town could hypothetically submit a home rule petition, requesting the revocation of its vote, be allowed to revoke its vote of the May town meeting accepting the act, and ask the Mass Legislature as a home rule petition to go back to the way it was. As long as it, and evidently, that could happen, because assuming that there's no controversy to it, assuming that the state legal counsel doesn't, for the House, doesn't see an issue with it, that is possible. So, I could, we could draft, I could draft something just to have them look at it, review it with legal counsel, and before you get to the town meeting, set your warrant, at least be able to tell you this might be able to be done or not.
Okay.
But otherwise, it's three years, it looks like, and then we would, we'd have to make it work. We can make it work, I'm just saying that there's a good deal of concern from the various parties involved as to how it would be, the role, who would do what, how much time would be involved, et cetera, et cetera.
So, the warrant article would just be to, if your process works, just that we're going to put it, make a home rule request?
Yeah, move to it, allow the town to submit it, authorize the select board to submit a home rule petition revoking the action of the town meeting on Article blank, blank, blank at the special town meeting, accepting this, and to restore back the Board of Registars previously, something like that. It's a, it's a possibility.
Okay. Any questions on that? Thank you for really doing the research on that, to find a solution for us.
Still making up as we go, trust me on that.
We'll go for it.
Okay, we'll try it.
Next one is, is if available, and I'll explain that in a second. Transfer of free cash to the Operational Stabilization Fund by the Select Board policy, anything, any free cash, over $500,000 left after we balance the budget and go through the appropriation process at the fall town meeting, that we transfer that excess to the Operational Stabilization Fund. It may be kind of tight if there is any money above $500,000, given the above. The speed limit near Long Metal High School, the Eversource Columbia Gas Conservation Projects and the street audits were from the list that you had prepared.
Why is the speed limit a town meeting? Isn't that the traffic department?
I don't know if you can answer that.
It wasn't, it wasn't on my list. I think, I thought there was a follow-up from one of the board members after the meeting saying, what about something else?
Right.
I think that's what...
That's not a town meeting.
I think it is, because remember that, that citizens petition to make Westmoreland a 20 mile an hour street that went in front of town meeting, it just was voted down. I think it can be a town meeting article.
I would, I would have to ask council.
Okay.
I mean, I'm just taking it from a list that I saw. I thought it was amazing.
No, I think it was discussed, and someone said, "Let's look at town meeting."
Okay.
And that's, like you said, it was just...
We'll go back and look at that, okay. I can find out from council. Again, Eversource Columbia Gas Conservation Projects for Town Buildings, I don't know if we have any matching shares or exactly the detail.
Yeah, there was, Stephen says we were going to hold that off to the fall, and he didn't want to put it in the capital plan. I just don't know where we are with that now.
I do not know myself.
Okay.
Just have to put a big question mark there, because I don't know. Street audit?
We talked about possible, wasn't it when Mario was in front of us?
Yeah, we were talking about it from a pavement standpoint. I think that's what it may be talking about, going around, funding and assessing, but that could be a capital, that could be something in the omnibus budget. We can take a look. I don't know if we have a price yet at all on it. We had talked about the idea of getting more, updating the information of an older street audit, and I think Lower Piner Valley had done, I think Mario had mentioned it, so I'll talk to Mario about talking to Piner Valley about...
Whether the weather makes it, okay.
That's right, okay, we'll do that.
And mentally, we're going to have easements for Dwight Road Project and North Interceptor Sewer.
And then we'll put down possibly building committee charter.
Building committee, and also have hazardous material bylaw. We had talked about that earlier.
Yeah.
We also are looking at, we had talked about 41-108B, which is an act dealing with the police and fire on expenses, but I need to get some further clarification from the chiefs on the impact of that. Evidently, it was approved at town meeting, but the explanation for the act is not consistent with what the act really is. Talks about paying people's legal expenses, but that's not what the statute is, is. So, rather than putting it back on or this and that, need to see if that's what, where we are. And I don't know what your position was going into town meeting on that article, and whether everybody understood exactly what the thing was, so we'll take a look at that.
There is one more thing that, I know Stephen said he had signed some preliminary agreements to, when he's redoing the pavement near town hall for charging stations, but he said something about there was going to be money owed on the town side, but he, so you might want to check where those agreements are.
Just as an update too, at your next meeting, I asked town council come in and give you an update on the DIF matter, the Colvest project. He can also update you a little bit more further on the, the Election Commission situation too.
And you'll miss that.
I will, but I look forward to the video and the DVD on that, so, yeah.
Those charging stations, are you referring to the ones at the town hall parking lot?
Yeah.
Yeah, okay.
And I just don't know, is that going to be money we have to come up with? Do you know?
Yeah, so we're doing an agalom, so Eversource covers 50% of the installation cost, and then the town has to come up with the other 50%, or the hardware.
Of the hardware?
Yeah.
Yeah, so we better dig up that.
Yeah, I think there was something in the packet not too long ago.
I think we should probably also, if I can, just suggest that we take a look and try to tighten our costs on looking at the LED too, just to make sure that the Cobra Heads and everything is good, we've got the resources to pick that up and get that project off and rolling, particularly if we're negotiating the lights and everything else from Eversource, given the appropriation, so, okay.
Mark?
Yeah, I don't know the best phrase to use. I'd like to see, see us put a bylaw request to charge for water that allows us to charge for it by fixed plus variable for water fees.
I wouldn't do that in a fall town meeting. That's going to be brutal.
No, it's not. I don't think it is. You know, I think, you know, it's time has come. So, it's just, so, so, right now, water, our bylaws say, "Water shall be charged by usage," and that's been interpreted by our town council that says, "So much per cubic meter or 100 cubic feet, or we charge by 100 cubic feet." And, and for a while, we actually had, like our sewer fees, where like everybody else's, you know, electric bills or gas bills, there was a, if you will, a facilities charge plus then a usage charge. The theory being that, you know, the people who are gone all winter long, we're still fixing pipes and paying for infrastructure, and our costs are about 50% fixed cost, but when it was determined that we couldn't do it, we moved back from a, you know, a billing system that said fixed plus variable to a totally variable cost. And I think we need to go to a fixed plus variable. There are just a lot of people in town who, you know, have empty houses, who don't pay anything for water, any water bills at all, and yet we're maintaining the water system so that when they do come in and turn on the faucet, it works, and it just, I don't think it's equitable.
Do you want to pull that together?
I'll be glad to.
And show that the next time?
Sure.
That's a lot, all of a sudden. We don't know how much will still go on. I have a question, reimbursement, any chance of it after the microburst? Any place we can chase that money down, or also from landfill closure? I know we requested money from the governor, and that was set aside and then never released.
With the landfill, I mean, the only spot that I'm aware of is with the governor, but I haven't heard anything in months now on that.
It's a poppy, you know?
Right.
He's not, it was approved, and he's not released the money as part of the capital plan.
And I can ask the fire chief on the other one. I'm unaware of any sources of money potentially coming there also.
Yeah, I think the state said for less than $150,000, they're not doing anything. Because when it came, when the tornadoes hit the Cape, they went group by group, and they said, "If your costs are low, they're not, they weren't reimbursing them either," but they were for tornadoes.
I mean, I think we still have to go through with the warrant article to pay off the bill, and if we got it, we're just going to the general fund, so. From the standpoint of warrant articles, I think we're safe, but yeah, it would be nice to get reimbursed for anything and everything, but, you know, we'll keep our fingers crossed, I guess.
Okay. All right, any other questions on charter, not charter, on the warrant, potential warrant articles? Thanks for putting that together.
Okay.
All right, so now, the, actually, the last thing we have is goal setting, usually the most difficult thing for us to do. I really liked what Jay said about going to a even higher level, which is looking out 30 years and seeing where we think our society and our town will be in order to start backfilling things, but that's going to be a fairly long-term project to do. I think that we should try to look at that chart and see if we can update the chart. I gave every, had everyone get the, oh, Tom has it in front of him. Or, we can look at creating a mission statement that gives us a little bit of looking forward on what our general policy goals are, but then we also have to do budget directives in the next month.
I think they're, I think you wanted them for the next meeting, actually.
Next meeting.
So, I will have drafts. The only thing that I'm going to ask is, for you guys also to discuss, is the priority of some of those directives. Again, I think last year, there's some confusion where, you know, maybe the so-called, it was, it said that the capital got shortchanged a little bit last year, and, you know, OPEB went through, and, and, you know, so I guess the question is, you know, what are the priorities?
So, you're saying priorities of the policies?
Priority of the policies, because if we end up short, where's the first place you would like the town manager or myself to cut? Is it going to be capital? Is it going to be the OPEB? Is it going to be the OPEB? You know, the other thing too is are you going to shoot for that additional 0.25% reduction in the tax levy of the prop two and a half allowable? Last year was 2%. We met the goal. Are you going to set it at 1.75 this year? You know, those are the goals. And then even if that comes into place, the priority of that versus capital versus OPEB, you know, I'd like to have that as a clear directive for the town manager or myself when we start preparing the budget later, you know, next calendar year, actually.
Jay, I'd like to get your perspective as a, I'll call, outside along though, central mass, west, eastern mass kind of perspective. When it comes to OPEB funding.
Yeah.
About seven or eight years ago, I was quoted as saying, we're either, we're one of the five smartest or five dumbest communities in the Commonwealth to be funding our OPEB liability. And, you know, you look at the communities that are, you know, Wellesley's and the Newtons, but, you know, the communities that aren't even looking at are Boston, Lowell, Lawrence, you know, New Bedford, Worcester, Springfield, you know. My sense is that, you know, it's important to do. We were pushed to it a lot by people saying, it's primarily coming from our audit committee saying, saying, well, if you don't fund it, you know, the rating committees, the Moody's are going to downrate you and your cost of capital is going to go way up. And we haven't seen the cost of capital impacted by that a whole lot, you know. And so, you know, my personal sense is that, you know, when push comes to shove, some point down the road, the state's going to have to do something for the major cities. And are we going to be so dumb that we funded all our OPEB liabilities and won't be able to have our hands out to take what the state was willing to offer because we did our own funding? Are we better off really not funding OPEB to that extent, letting this, you know, not being any worse than anybody else, maybe staying a little bit ahead of the curve, but not running out to fund OPEB? And what do you see, you know, in towns, the other towns you've worked in?
So we actually have had this conversation, Paul and I have talked about OPEB because when we did the, at North Attleboro Electric, which is a smaller operation, we were one of the first entities in the state to actually fully fund OPEB. But it's obviously a lot easier with a limited number of employees. I mean, the truth seems to me that you're never going to fully fund OPEB. Your delta is just way there. I do think, my understanding is that, you know, you do have a double A rating, so you don't want to jeopardize it. So I would certainly defer to Paul in the context of the value of funding it or showing a level of funding. The truth is however, the flip of that is, as part of an evaluation is, you know, it can be tough if you've got operational needs that year and you are putting money, you know, you're short teachers, you're laying off, you're doing that, and you're putting money instead into an OPEB trust when you might have services or individual teachers or this and that going, and you're putting the money into the OPEB trust. So there is some concern with regards to, you know, doing it. My concerns would be, what do the rating agencies expect of you? Because you don't want to jeopardize your double A. On the other hand, it's probably unlikely that you're going to be able to truly pay for your, your delta is just going to be in the millions. So you're showing good faith in doing it, but you're, how far are you going? And then three, you are taking money that would, could otherwise be allocated to current operating expenses and taking it out and putting it in the trust. So, you know, you've got this, I think you keep that in mind and I think you evaluate it a little bit relative to how much are we putting into the OPEB? What are we trying to achieve? Are we trying to show good faith? We trying to put just a percentage in each time? Are we showing that each year we're committed to it by doing it? But how, when you take it, you also are taking money out of operating expenses that, you know, as you get tighter and tighter down the road, you know, that I think it becomes more and more of at least something to be considered as to the amount of allocation and what that's predicated on, et cetera, what you're trying to achieve.
Mark, I mean, Paul, I understand that one of the problems we have if we set a policy is if we don't actually follow our policy, it hurts us more than if we didn't have a policy. So instead of not following a policy, we should consider changing our policies, is I correct?
I think both the OPEB policy and the capital policy have been modified to include the word when affordable. So that there is no impact on the operating budget. And if there is an impact on the operating budget, again, because they also say there's going to be a 0.25% increase that's expected annually. And that's the part that comes in if affordable.
Okay.
So I think there is some leeway there. And again, as Jay alluded to, if it's going to impact the operating budget, and I was saying about priorities, then, you know, if OPEB is the case, then OPEB is the first one to be knocked down, you know, where we maintain level services or services level plus if there's something very vital or important to the community, we would look at those first as the top priority and OPEB would be kind of further down the list.
And so the policies that you're talking about prioritizing are the infrastructure investment and the OPEB investment. Was there another one you wanted us to look at in prioritizing?
Well, you have, you have not memorialized this policy, but you have it as a goal. And that was over the last two years, we reduced the, of the allowable two and a half percent increase. Two years ago, we reduced it by a quarter of a percent to 2.25%. I should say one year ago, FY18. For the FY, I'm sorry, for the FY19 budget, it was 2.25. For FY20 budget that's implemented, we only are anticipating going up 2%. You know, is this going to be a goal to get to 1.75% in FY21?
So that's one of the things you want us to prioritize?
Right, that would be one of the things also.
Look where we stand, okay.
You know, that quarter of a percent, you know, is maybe $130,000, $140,000. So, I mean, it's not a huge amount, but it does have, you know, it can make or break certain, not necessarily budgets, but certain programs, whether they get off the ground or not.
What about things like the fire truck? Putting money aside for fire trucks and things like that? Is that a policy to look at?
That's, it hasn't been policy, but it's been a practice of the capital plan. That money is there. I think with the recent purchase of, you know, we purchased two fire vehicles within the recent history, you know, last five or six years, that, I don't want to say we're a little ahead of the game, but we're back caught up. And that fund is actually growing now where there, I believe there's almost $300,000 in it. So the time we do need a new fire truck, it should be minimal additional funds. So I think you want to keep that going because at some point in time, and I'm not quite sure of the fire inventory exactly when that next truck is expected to be purchased, but I think it's a few years off that I think we're going to be all set by the time that comes to fruition.
Any other questions in regards to prioritizing? The, one of the things I wrote down here, I think I got a little freaked out on the email, on the Route 5 project, are we going to have concerns about funding our share of the Route 5 project?
I would have to get together with Mario to see where that is, the timing of it, you know, if it's that chunk of change, I mean, we're probably going to have to bond for it.
But you're not worried? This is something that.
I don't, again, I think that's probably a little ways off.
Okay, yes, 2023, I just didn't know.
Right, so it's, you know, I just have to tighten that up. It's not, I'm not concerned about it right now in all honesty.
We got to figure out what's going on with our, with our prop two and a half tax cap too. I mean, you know, what are the first round of full evaluations, measuring lists coming in at, you know, I mean, if we're, if, you know, if we have another year of property values flat or going down, we got other issues to deal with.
Right, I don't think we're going to see that in FY20. When we set the tax rate, I think you can see the values are going to continue to go up greater than two and a half percent. But, you know, in three years from now, who knows what's going to happen? And if we get hit with a decline, we're going to accelerate that so-called law very quickly. I think we're at 2024 right now. We have a good year in FY20, it's probably going to be pushed off to 2025 or 26. But again, that can drastically change very quickly.
I know the controversy, last year's budget was also the casino money and how that was going to be spent. And I don't think we gave you clear directives on that. We were very wishy-washy.
Right, that was another issue, the casino money and how it should be spent. You know, again, I think when you look at the surrounding communities agreement, the surrounding communities agreement says one thing. When you talk to the Department of Revenue, it's just an estimated receipt according to the Department of Revenue. So I really don't know what to tell you, which plan you want to follow. You may recall, well, you may not recall, but a few years ago, we had to go back to town meeting to reappropriate the initial $850,000.
Yeah.
Because they put it in our free cash as a general fund type of thing, even though we had it separated as a special article or a special revenue account, they actually closed it out for us and put it in our free cash that we can spend any way we want.
No, money is fungible, Paul. It's just a matter of, you know, I mean, you put it in your left pocket, you can spend it for anything you want.
But it, but, well, I guess it's frustrating though when one department at the state level says one thing and the other department says another.
I understand that, but, you know, we have, you know, I hate to use this analogy, but it's kind of like your United Way allocation, you know, you allocate it to an agency, they're not getting any more because you allocated it because they're just.
Right, right.
We can allocate this to public works or to whatever.
Yeah, you can say that it's theoretically going to the police department or the fire department or whoever, yeah.
All right, so we need to get budget directives. I'll resend this. If, how do you feel about working on a mission statement and where we really want to go with our policies and management?
Well, Marie.
Because I think it's also a way for us to communicate with the new town manager on where we see our priorities, where we feel, so, or a longer statement. I think right now, we have not been focused on where we're trying to explain to town managers and subsequent. I think if we all were on a same sheet, it might help.
My only concern is that for us to write a mission statement, I think is preemptive of a charter, because the town charter, I went back and looked at it, it's Article 3, Section 2, it tells you the mission of the select board. So I don't think we can write a mission statement. You know, we can write our intent, we can write, you know, our high-level goals or something like that, you know, or our five-year goals or something like that. But to call it a mission statement is, I think, overstepping our.
Strategic vision?
Whatever, I don't.
Do you want to?
Come up with a name, but, you know.
Well, that's what I'm saying, you rewrite it, but I think we need to have something that we all agree with and then we can start rolling policies out of it. Or, I mean, if we, because if we just sit here and say, well, here's a chart and we're just sort of throwing things on the board, but I think most people have a view of where they want us to go, like a strong public safety, good schools, and then.
And that's fine, but I'm not sure that that, that we want the statement to be so broad, you can drive a truck through it because if it is that, then why are we even writing it? I mean, it's kind of motherhood and apple pie and we're all going to, all going to be for it. I think if you're going to do that, I think you have to target either underperforming or minimal performing departments that you want to strengthen or areas that you want to say, you know, if there's a coin toss on where money goes, we think preferentially it goes into this department because this department is more impactful to the town.
I think that's too close to, I think we're at too lower a level. I think we got to start at a higher level than that. Does anyone else have any thoughts? No?
I mean, I could throw you a couple.
Oh, throw me, throw us something, yeah.
The words are, can be ambiguous and interpreted in different ways, right? So, but it's hard to, it's hard to write a mission statement and then draw specific policies from that because people are going to have different priorities in different ways to interpret what's been written.
I think it's been pretty clear that, you know, the makeup of the current board has put a huge emphasis in the last five or six years on capital expenditures. You know, prior to that, we weren't spending money on capital expenditures. That's a de facto statement of this board and either we're going to continue that or we're not, you know. And similarly to some of the other issues of OPEB, but that was a, that was a significant shift from 10 years ago or even eight years ago, Marie, putting on a huge emphasis on capital, on capital expenditures. So I think that that's a viable decision, that we think maintaining the, you know, maintaining the assets of the town in high-quality order is important. And you could also say that about, and the appearance of the town, if that's what you want, putting money toward, you know, our tree program or the things that we talked about after that October 11th, 2011 storm, you know, that kind of stuff. So I think some of those are appropriate to do at what I'll call a department mobile.
Well, you see, what I'm looking for is where, what we emphasize is important. Do we want to emphasize respect, service, good communications? If we just talk about money and budgetary priorities, then we're not really saying what we really feel is important. I think we need to communicate that to, and where we feel we need to start putting our resources is one thing, but I think also the culture we want to develop in town.
Not getting, not to become too political here, but you're talking, you know, do we want to become the town of Cambridge or city of Cambridge, Massachusetts, who wants to speak out on global issues and, you know.
I don't think I said anything here about global issues.
No, but, you know, saying, you know, greater respect and great, I mean, or do we want to make sure we run the town in a manner that the people in the town want us to run the town? Provide the services that are important to the town, you know, minimize the tax rate that we do it at and, you know, and maximize the quality of the services. To me, you know, that's what we're elected to do, is to make sure people, you know, get what they want to, given the fact that the 21st century has encroached on a 17th and 18th century community and we've been able to evolve to continue to maintain that. I mean, that's part of what we do.
All right, so does everyone else feel we stick to the budget issues and set the goals for the budget issues?
Well.
Because we could do that. We just need to have an idea of where people are going with that.
Well, I think that the other issues you brought up, you know, are important things in that, you know, like we, we want to look at maintaining this sense of a green community, you know, the social connectedness of people, you know, that we're reaching out to people who are perhaps, you know, living alone and have no social contact, you know, and we're trying to bring people in and service the needs of our aging population. I mean, those are just as important as any budgetary goals that we put on there. And so, yeah, I think we should include them, but I guess part of it is to, if you identify these main areas of emphasis, and then you'd have some goals. And I think we tried to do it with this sheet in some ways, you know.
All right, so why don't we look at, how about the top five goals we should be looking at? Not saying specifically give money to the police department, but five goals and then from those goals, we can look about the steps we go towards moving the goals?
Budgetary goals?
No, just five goals on what we, how we would like the town to move forward. Goals that we would give the town manager and policies, and then we would start developing policies to support those goals, whether it's build stronger schools or improve connectivity and support to our aging population.
All right, so I guess I was a little bit confused because the mission statement was in with the budget directives. So I was trying to reconcile.
No, no, I was just throwing things out there to try and get see where people are just going.
Now that I understand it a little bit better, I fully support that. I think that's a great idea. I think we should, you know, establish some sort of goals that the board can advocate for and move on forward. I think that's a great idea.
So everyone bring five to the next meeting and then we'll try to work that out. But more, most importantly, we're going to have to make a final decision next, next meeting on our budget directives. So the prior prioritization of whether we're going to go under 2 and a half, 2%, which is 1.75 in the taxes, or whether we prioritize, what are we supposed to be doing, OPEB at this time?
Well, again.
Go up another 2.5 or?
Well, again, OPEB and capital within the policy state that they go up a quarter of a percent every year of their respective revenue, you know, designations, if affordable. So which. So which one is, is higher priority than the other, capital or OPEB?
And some of the other issues to talk about is, do we have directives on the spending of the casino funds? What are we doing with a, the funding of our stormwater projects? I know we started moving more stormwater in it. Did we want to see more of the enterprise fund covering stormwater? Are there other issues you want us to?
There's none that I can think of, but I thank you for reminding me about the stormwater one, too. Because I know that was brought up in discussion last year also. It would be my intent to, I think we went from, oh, like 30 to 35%. It would be my intent to also go up to 40% or something to that nature of the funding from the general fund in that particular enterprise.
All right, if anyone could think of anything else in the way, I'll sort of tie these, what we talked about, send it all out to everyone if you have more things you want to throw on that list for us to discuss. If you could get that to me before the next packet, so that everyone can have an idea of what we're going to be talking about and considering. But we'll have to be actual voting and discussion, and if everyone could send me their five top general goals for the community. Anything else on goals, you think? Okay.
I just wanted to make a report on, under subcommittees.
Yes.
Jay alluded to it earlier, we met with Eversource about purchasing our streetlights. It was the most pleasant meeting I've been at with Eversource ever, it was amazing, they said-
Were you being sarcastic?
No, they said, just send us a check. I said, how about the discrepancies? They said, send us a list, we'll take care of them, don't worry about it. You know, that, that, it, it was great, I, I, you know, and essentially they said, you know, we got the, you know, you've got the figure, and the figure is now $640,000, I think, which is less than we thought it was. I think every month we wait, it goes down a couple hundred bucks or something like that. My sense is they're going to pull it all together and, and the interesting part was, they said, and we have this agreement, we said, and they said, you can send it to your lawyer. We said, well, what's our lawyer going to do with it? And they said, well, nothing, just read it, because it's our, it's our agreement and we don't modify it, which we kind of expected.
He's looked at, he did look at it, he has a couple of notes, but he did acknowledge the same point that, you know, there, it's unlikely. He pointed out a couple of things, I'll send you a note of specific concerns, and there are things to be aware of, but that was, yeah, yeah, he did look at it, yes.
But, but it sounds like we're going to move forward fairly quickly with the purchase of our streetlights. We need to bring in, get in place a, a maintenance contract to go in coincident with that. And that begins savings immediately. And it's the conversion to LEDs that then locks in an even greater numbers, amount of savings later. But obviously you got to own them before you can, can convert them, and so, how are we going to do that?
So we're almost at the end of the trail, it's been going seven years.
No, 2008.
Longer than that?
2009.
10 or 11 years.
About 10 or 11 years.
Yeah, I mean, it, it, yeah, you're right, we're on, certainly the buying part, I mean, there's still a lot of, you know, there's always, always issues, but they, you know, the whole, all the, all the comments about, well, who fixes this and who fixes, you know, we're not buying what's called utility poles, the poles that have the wires on them, that's theirs. And, and in terms of putting our lights on their poles, it's a no-cost, just sign a piece of paper saying, you'll check with us before your, your contractor does anything. I mean, there's, you know, the, and the poles are, some are Eversource poles, some are Verizon poles, and they all, both have a common agreement kind of thing. And so the, the complexity of how we put stuff on their poles isn't complex at all, apparently, so.
Well, what about the poles that Verizon is leasing space on top of the light poles that we're buying? Do we need to-
Verizon doesn't lease space to anybody, they have, they have a, an agreement-
No, no, I mean, do they lease off of Eversource?
No, they don't-
They don't?
Verizon and Eversource don't swap money at all.
Usually they're just jointly owned poles.
They're, and, and some of them are assigned to Eversource, apparently, to maintain, and some are assigned to Verizon to maintain, but-
So we're not buying any Verizon poles that have lights on them?
You're not buying poles?
We're not buying, the pole, the only poles we are buying, Jay, are the ones in residential neighborhoods where there's a little, a standalone pole that's generally like a three-by-three foot square pole with a light on top of it, and some of them are round and stuff, those are just light poles, and those poles we are buying. But anything that one would call a utility pole, when he's 25, 35, 30-foot foam poles with wire, we're not buying any of that stuff.
All you're, all you're going to do is replace the LED light and the, yeah, and the extension.
Hold it, hold it, I thought we were buying streetlight poles because we weren't going to have the lease anymore.
We're buying the poles that we currently lease that have decorative lights on those, those poles we're buying.
What about all the others, we're still going to have a lease, then?
No, we don't have a lease, there's no-
There are two types of lights that are involved.
Right.
One is the, what they call the Cobra heads, which are the traditional lights.
That stick out and-
Yeah, which you would know as, so you're driving down the street, and there's the extension and then the light. So that's an attachment to an Eversource slash Verizon pole. There are also what are called decorative lights. Decorative lights may, would be something where they are not the traditional Cobra head for the most part. They may have some other intricacy to them that was there. So that's what, what Mark is saying is, on the decorative light side of it, which you have a lot of, you have, you would be getting the pole there because that's a specialty item in essence. The stuff down the main drag is what you would know of, is the high-density sod- sodiums. Those are the ones you would be replacing. All you're going to be doing there is, your vendor's going to come down, take out the attachment to it, put in a new extension, put in the LED, or, or just the LED and replace it, and then go home. And you're just responsible for that extension and the LED bulb.
So we don't lease poles?
We'll have no leases when we're done with this, correct?
No, you're right, I mean, to go through it, you, so you're, yeah, that's right.
So the last question is on the audit?
Yeah.
We're redoing the audit?
We're only redoing part of the audit.
We're only, we didn't come out with a total loss on the press last audit?
No, we're, we're re-
We're auditing the audit.
We're auditing, okay.
Tango is taking a look at the decoratives because the audit wasn't clear enough and, I, I've done a lot of driving around town. So it looks like that every contractor, every developer in town who built a subdivision in town, put up, because they needed to, streetlights. And they bought whatever decorative light was available at the time. So we, we have, I think we counted 18 or 20 different decorative lights around town. And because what they're doing is, they're not replacing the whole fixture, they're just replacing the socket, if you will, inside, they need to know what those are. And so they're going to go around, Marie, and say, okay, that's a decorative that takes this kind of socket, that's a decorative that takes that kind of a sock. So they're going to re-audit the decoratives to take a look at that and see, see where they, so that they, uh-
So you're going to begin with the LED replacements on the Cobra heads and you're going to work your way back to, toward the other ones. But they may have different, one decorative does not serve everybody, so there's different types of those, and that's, becomes the challenge as they work with them.
So Jay, today I noticed that along Wool Swamp Road area, there are a whole bunch of streetlights that are utility poles with wires.
Yeah.
With an armature and a decorative light on top.
Really? Where, over on Wool Swamp?
No, on Bel Air specifically, you can find it on Bel Air.
I'll take a look at that.
So we got them all, we got everything.
Will there be any point, like, when we looked at the stoplights, you know, we've looked at getting fluted poles and trying to set a certain standard, will there be anything like that where the board will make a decision on the type of fixtures that will be going?
They'll probably come to us with alternatives, although I don't think there are a whole lot of alternatives on the, on the Cobra heads, which are pre, standard. But the decoratives, the sense we, I got at least, is they're going to try not to change the, the lamps themselves and only change the sockets.
You definitely want to do that, but the attachments underneath can be, can vary. And so one size does not necessarily fit all, but, yeah.
But they, they seem to take that they had a, a whole bunch of options, and so they want to make sure, you know, how many of each kind they were getting, so I don't think we're going to be making a lot of those changes, no.
The only place would be if we decided to add new lights on some poles. Those, we would have a, a choice about what we're-
Probably not a lot of choice, I think at some point you-
You'd stay with your Cobra heads at that point, whatever you bought. What's going to happen is, assuming everything goes well, that what they would do is, we would utilize the Metropolitan Area Planning Commission's solicitation of, for LED lights on behalf of several entities. That's scheduled to happen in December of this year. So we need the number of what we need from them at that point. On the decorative light stuff, they may or may not be able to help us specifically at that point in time because their solicitation will be on the Cobra heads, what they call the Cobra heads. Then in January, they will do a second solicitation with regards to the installers. So they'll make that available, and they'll solicit that, and then they'll do a bid or a solicitation of that. Based on that, because the, the assumption is volume will keep the cost down. So it won't be just Long Meadow, it'll be several communities or this and that. Then Long Meadow will select the vendor based on that, and we'll have already given them what we want for a light. And then we'll have to coordinate getting the lights in and getting the vendor out. They want it done by the end of May. There's a grant that's involved there, not huge, but there's a grant that they are, is available. They're looking for the project to be completed by May. So the vendor needs to be able to get in here and then go bang, 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 down the street to be able to knock out a lights. So they can probably do a single truck. A couple of years ago, we used it, we probably knocked out 20 lights in a day, a single vehicle. So you want to make sure that whoever comes in gives you a time period that they know they can hit. They put enough trucks in here to, to knock, so if it's three months or whatever, you can get them moving.
All right, so Jay, one of the things we did with the turn, you know, with the stoplights is, you know, we have these black lights, and is there any chance that we could get any of these Cobra heads? Anything to do with black, it kind of has some consistency, will we be getting options like that?
I don't know that yet, I, I think that we're working off the streetlight straight. If there's other lights that are there, those could be identified, they may be able to procure at the same time. I also have a procurement that I'll give you, I'll send you, that we've used, so you can adjust it and utilize it yourself if you need to go out and get some other stuff later on. And then there'll also be an element you'll need to do of communication with people, so they know what's happening, when it's happening. And if you can figure out, we can do a way which, you can say, well, they're going to be in the east part of town today for the next three or four days, and here's where we're going to be, and these are the number of lights, so if you see them, and then keep people aware. Also, there'll be some stuff we'll want, you'll want to get some kind of, of shields, some limited number because invariably the lighting pattern changes. Right now, high-def sodium would come down and then the light diffuses that way. The LEDs are straight. What happens is some, the lighting pattern changes, people who might not see light at all suddenly see it and are aware of it, and then indicate, well, it's much brighter than it used to be, it's coming in places it didn't come. But you can get shields or things like that that you can work with, that can, or you can angle the lights differently. So there'll be a little touch-up afterwards on it, but it can all be done, yeah.
Following up what Tom says, though, on our green, is this a time for us to look at something decorative for our green?
Could be, but you can do that solicitation separately once you understand that.
Okay.
You can do that separately. You know, your, your lighting, at that point, Tango should be able to give you a clear indication of each one and what it takes, and be able to tell you, you know, what bulbs you, lamps you need or what else you need with regards to it, sure.
Yeah, because when you go to towns and their lights, you know, you know, like, oh, here I am in this town.
Oh, yeah.
And you can tell by the lights, and, you know, we shouldn't, hopefully we can have some options. We'll see, I mean, I, I know we want to keep, you know, if we can buy in bulk and, and get a good price, obviously that's a good idea. We're going to save money, you know, in terms of the, because they're LEDs. But, you know, we should look, think about the character of the town and, and special places, especially like the green on the main streets, you know, what we can do.
We have, we have about 1,450 lights in town, lights in town. And it's surprising, about 550 of them are so-called Cobra heads and 900 of them are decorative, so. And, and, and there are 18 or 20 different-
Different kinds.
Different kinds, so, we got a lot of, you know-
It'll be years till they all match.
We don't have, we don't have consistency now, Tom, we're not going to have it when we're done, so.
All right, thanks for the work. Any other subcommittee reports? No, is there a motion to adjourn?
Just ask a quick question. So just my own notification, with respect to the new trash carts?
Yes.
Do we know, do we have an enforcement mechanism for that? So how, is it going to be the hauler, is it going to be the town?
The next, the next meeting, Arlene is coming to roll in the whole project, literally, with the actual-
The answer is, it's always been the hauler, because they're the ones out there and they, even now, they put stickers on your, they're supposed to be putting stickers on your truck.
It's not one of these barrels that just won't collect the trash.
And they'll leave a sticker that says it's not, it's not-
Or it's overflowing, then you have to stick it the first time. But you will be in a situation where you'll be, they'll be using these trash as the one element that they'll take, the only bag that, bin that they'll take. You do have, back in 2007, you did vote, or the board voted for a gallonage of 36. This is going to be 35, so it's small, but at some point you may want to just amend that vote, just to make it, Arlene can talk you through, and DPW has done a great job with her committee and herself and others to, to work our way through, and coupled with East Long Meadow, because it's all part of a single grant for both entities, so, yeah.
Thanks for bringing that, because he put that in, review that if you have any questions or edits or concerns. They'll be here next week, but they'd appreciate if you got that to them ahead of time. All right.
Okay, motion to adjourn.
Second.
All this in favor? All right, thank you very much for joining us. We'll be back, is it the 16th?
16th.
The 16th, thank you.